Like three thirty-four.
The recorder's on.
I couldn't do that.
Here we go.
Yeah, man. It was cold. I slipped downstairs.
That's what I forgot.
I see eyeballs.
That's what I forgot my water.
Alright, so I'm gonna start going through the agenda. Alright. Uh, on... We have the, uh, the public hearing tonight on Judy's, uh, legislation.
Green or blue?
So, we're starting with the, uh, the public hearing. Uh, local laws, our local laws. You need something, Fado? On local laws, it's, uh, the local laws are held. Introduction of ordinances. Uh, we have Mr. Holy's, uh, fifteen eighty-one nineteen. Uh, that'll be an intro and, uh, going to planning. Uh, I have an MC, uh, in the ordinances. Uh, it's going around. So, uh, Councilmember Faes at sixteen eighty-one nineteen. That's an MC for the USDO.
Yep.
Any questions on that?
Does that come out of the five G thing? Kathy? This is brought up after five G.
Oh, yeah, you know, I misspoke there. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead. You can answer a question.
Uh, you know, they're putting up the new lights. So, I think this is... These small cell companies will be contacted to get the stuff.
Complaints about the five Gs they were putting on over. They were putting them in middle people's law.
Well, yes.
This does.
So, this is...
Which I was speaking to. This is from... Which is in all the public communications in Philadelphia and this and all places down there.
And they have very strict limitations on what they can put up. Some of them have to make it to artificial trees and this and that.
Philadelphia.
Look at it. So, okay.
I'll call the committee first.
Our rule. Okay.
I said ASAP. I don't know.
We're not passing it tonight, right? Is this a pass?
But I'm...
This is... This isn't for passage tonight, is it?
Just introduction.
Intro.
It don't go to you.
Right. Okay. An intro and referral to planning so we can have those discussions down the line. Uh, the rest of the ordinances are held with the exception of Judy's, uh, ordinance on the USDO. It's number five. Uh, on to intro of resolutions. First one's the certifying of, uh, homestead, non-homestead classes. That's Kathy, that's yours, right? Is that yours or Judy's? Judy. Fifty-seven eighty-one nineteen. The homestead, non-homestead.
He didn't designate. He was planning for Judy if she wanted.
Right, I thought we decided.
It's gonna be referred to finance.
It's an introduction.
We didn't do it last year.
Right, we didn't do it last year. And I thought in caucus, we actually talked about it and we were gonna mix it. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Does Sarah wanna?
Is there any?
Sarah, do you wanna? Do you know anything about?
Okay. So, we're not... So... Oh. So, let's just introduce it and then, I mean...
Can we just introduce it?
You said, so Detroit held it?
I'll, I'll intro it because...
Didn't go to finance and do it.
...those conversations and what we actually have done.
Gotcha.
Last year, we were looking at it and we had done it.
In all years before that, we talked about it and that.
Right, the last time we did it was seventeen, I think.
Alright.
I think that we did it. Alright, so an intro and it's gonna be held. Uh, have another MC, uh, adding or reappointing Mr. Hyman to the PEG Access Board. Uh, that will be Ms. Cleers and I can, I'll do it for her since she's not, she's not here. That'll be a pass. Uh, we have Mr. Hyman here, sitting here behind me. Um, anyone have any questions for him? Thank you for your service and thank you for willing to be a part of this. Anyone have any questions? Right, I'd like to make a comment.
I think it would be nice to have him come up and just tell us a little bit about his experience. Appreciate you being here.
I know, but Mr. Hyman.
And if I could just say, you've been one of the best standing members of the PEG Board. You, you, you were one of the most conscientious serving people in that. In my opinion.
Our, our community deserves to have a first-class, uh, public access station. And, uh, I was honored to be invited to be a part of that and be at the forefront of what I've seen. I've gone down to, uh, Brooklyn, uh, and spent some time at their major studio because I worked at Brooklyn Academy of Music, uh, when I was at Brooklyn College many years ago. And I see the Capitol Region as the new media center for the world, not just the Capitol Region. We have some creative and talented people in this area and they need an opportunity to express their, um, their talents and gifts. And public access is a wonderful way to do this. I've gone to some conferences and whatever I could do to bring it to a higher level, that's my mission in life, my goal. And I thank you for, uh, reappointing me.
Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. That'll be a pass. Okay, uh, the rest of... For, for Mr. Hyman? It's fifty-nine eighty-one.
Fifty-nine eighty-one.
Okay, we're good? Alright, rest of the resolutions are held with the exception of number seven. Uh, reappointing, uh, excuse me, appointing Adriana LaBland as a member of BZA. Is she here?
Yeah.
Have her come up. Come up and introduce yourself.
She was here.
Yes.
Was she here?
Hi, my name is Adriana LaBland. I spoke to the planning committee last week, um, and I'm really excited to be appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals and get back involved with the city of Albany. Uh, I moved here about five years ago from France. I was born and raised in France on the Jour Saison. I'm a lawyer here locally. I ended up in Albany by accident, but fell in love with Albany. It's not perfect, but I think it's doing great things and always they're trying to do great things and to do better. And I love that and I want to be a part of that.
Any questions? Thank you. Alright, that's it for the, uh, agenda.
Okay.
So, with that, uh, Mayor.
I know you're just in a public hearing tonight, um, but I just wanted to have the opportunity. I met with, uh, Councilmember Robinson today and I just wanted to have the opportunity to speak with all of you together. Um, I want to, we issued a, a press statement last week, um, but I wanted to be able to answer any questions that you had with respect to Arbor Hill Park. Um, I'd like to start by saying that when I became mayor, one of the first things that was brought to my attention was that they, we had to issue an emergency notice to, um, take down the lights in Arbor Hill Park because they had rotted from the inside. Um, administration after administration had ignored this park. And when we took a closer look at the park, the bathrooms had been closed, the concession stand had been closed. The, the lights had literally been allowed to rot. And I met with members of the Arbor Hill Softball League who were very passionate about saying that even though the lights were down, they didn't want to have to move to a temporary field, um, until new lights could be installed. And so, I reached out to the business community and I was able to secure lighting so that that softball field could continue to be the home of the Arbor Hill Softball League that year. I also instituted a waiver of any fees for the Arbor Hill Softball League. As you know, we had a report that was issued to us by PFM, uh, that came in and did a management audit under the Jennings Administration in two thousand and eleven and noted that the city of Albany was not charging fees for use of their fields that were, um, comparable to surrounding communities. And so, the Jennings Administration made adjustments to what was being charged for those fields, um, and to use those fields. And so, uh, when it was brought to my attention that this was really pricing the Arbor Hill Men's Softball League out of being able to use that historic field, we waived those fees. So, we no longer charge any fees for that softball league to play on that field. Um, we have had some frustrations recently in that, uh, we, uh, had, the one thing that we had asked from the league was to provide us with a schedule. Um, we can provide this council and I know that, uh, Council President Corielis has seen the documentation of the multiple requests that we made to get a schedule for the field because we had always made it clear that if the field wasn't being used, we would lease it out to other leagues so that we could, again, continue to have revenue which helps pay for our recreation programs. So, uh, we had an issue that occurred where there was no communication, uh, that a game was happening there, uh, and the, the field had been leased out. Um, so in order to avoid that, um, recreation reached out again. They received a schedule which was actually just days, not schedules, but the dates that, the days of the week that the Arbor Hill Men's League would want that field. And then games were scheduled on alternate days. I was frustrated. We took fifteen thousand dollars from a paying league for fields and now we were going to have to cancel their games again. So, out of frustration, I went down to the field to ask the individuals who were involved in running the league to please just give me a schedule. If the Arbor Hill Men's Softball League had said, "We want that field every night of the week", we would have given them the field every night of the week. We're not looking to make money on anybody else's time. We just wanted to have a schedule. And so, I went down to the field, I asked for the schedule, uh, and there was a back and forth exchange. Uh, and ultimately, we did receive the next day the Arbor Hill Men's Softball Schedule. And we are in the process of working with the paid leagues who have reserved it on dates that now the Men's Softball League wants. We will find them alternative fields. We may have to pay for those alternative fields, but we're gonna do everything in our power to accommodate that schedule. At no time has any of our youth programming there been impacted by this. We are not closing down the Arbor Hill Sports Complex. And we are doing everything in our power. And I have been doing everything in my power, including investing seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars to rebuild the field, to rebuild the ble, the, the, uh, stands, to rebuild the bathrooms, to rebuild the, um, concession stand, to bring that park back up to where it should have been all along. So, I want to commit to this council and I want to make it clear because I don't want there to be any miscommunication. If any member of this council wants to work with the city to bring additional programming to the Arbor Hill Sports Complex, if they want to bring in constituents who have ideas and, uh, desires for additional programming at the Arbor Hill Sports Complex, we remain ready, willing, and able to accommodate any of those requests. We want nothing more than for the community to be able to benefit from the use of this park. We have not had issues like this at any other park in the city. And we have leagues of all shapes and sizes, every kind of sport that you can imagine, utilizing parks throughout the city. Some of them for fees, some of them for free. And it really is our desire to ensure that first and foremost, our residents benefit from the use of the recreation facilities that we have. We have a night basketball program that now happens at Arbor Hill Park because the city is funding it and paying the individuals who are operating and, and overseeing that, uh, that program. And it's phenomenal. Um, I love going down there and engaging with our young people and interacting with them and seeing what they're getting out of having adult leaders from the community interacting with them and, and working with them, um, on things that are important to them, having those conversations. So, we want to ensure that we do more of that. And, uh, again, uh, any, uh, it, I just want to make it very clear. This was never, ever about trying to push anybody out of Arbor Hill Park, ever. Had this league asked and, or said, "Our schedule requires that we have this field every night", they would have had the field every night. This was a lack of communication and it led to frustration on our part. It put the city in jeopardy because we made commitments to other teams based on an understanding of what the schedule was. And that's a very difficult position for anybody to be in. But, uh, you know, the, the, uh, the goal of the city is for this facility to be utilized by the community, for the community. And, uh, every action that I have taken since I became mayor, every action that I have taken has demonstrated that. Um, from the standpoint of stepping up, making the investment, making the commitment, uh, underwriting this league, anything that we can do to ensure that the community comes first in Arbor Hill Park, we will do. But I will also say that it is our fiscal responsibility, if there are nights when this field is not utilized, that like every other field in the city, it be available for others to come in and register and use. So, ultimately, if this council or if members of the community want us to not ever take a penny uh, from any, uh, league or anyone else to utilize a field even when it's not being used, that's a broader conversation that needs to occur. But it has never been the intention of this administration. And I, I guess I'm standing here reacting strongly because it has been suggested that this administration is trying to push people out of that park. And nothing could be further from the truth. I am a hundred percent committed to ensuring that we have programming in Arbor Hill Park that the community wants and that meets the needs of the community. And it's only after that, it's only if there is other time that's available that we have ever looked at utilizing and following the recommendations of the PFM report to lease it out to other leagues. So, I wanted to come and have you hear that from me directly and personally. And as you can tell, uh, I'm a little, um, I, I just, I, I, I don't know what more we could be doing to signal our support and our commitment to this park and to this community. Um, and if there is, I would like for it to happen in the civility of sitting in an office and talking through, uh, what those things are and what other, other, uh, uh, programming we could be providing to the community, um, rather than suggesting that, uh, I am looking to push people out of a park that is beloved, that has a long history, uh, that was created at a time when there was racial tension in this city, that is a legacy that I inherited and I understand that I inherited it. And I stand by our commitment to try to right the wrongs of the past and move forward with equity and with ensuring that we are doing all that we can for the Arbor Hill community and for the park.
So, I would, I would like to respond because to let you come here and make that statement and not respond will be, um, a lost opportunity, further ado. Uh, it was said to us that you said, "Why do we think this is our field?" Because it's always been our field. And, um, since I've been knowing about the, you know, since I've been in the Delta and I've returned to Albany, Frank Rogers has been trying to get into that field. And, you know, uh, what we need to first talk about is how the prior administration took thirty-two thousand dollars that had been allocated to that field for years. It was filled into the budget and they took it away. And I brought that to your attention and I brought that to the people that work for you's attention. Um, the Arbor Hill Softball Field for our community was like Vegas. It's the place that you go to escape whatever it is that you're dealing with on a daily basis. So, they've been sitting around waiting like voroness for the league to fall apart because that league was built off of black businesses in Albany. We had bars and, um, that supported that league. They had teams in that league. And they shut down the bars. They, first they took the money and then they took, then they shut down the bars. So, now there's no funding. So, uh, one of the things that, um, I commend Deki for is because Deki has been the person that's, you know, held that fiber together. And, uh, if we are truly sincere about wanting to support the Arbor Hill, one of the, um, strong signals would be putting that thirty-two thousand dollars back in that budget so that that field, um, could be kept. You said that you spent, uh, money on the scoreboard. That scoreboard has never worked, not one.
So, can, can we just, can we?
Let me finish something that you could respond because I waited a long time. And I lose my, my, my point of thought real quick. Uh, you, you, it was said that sprinklers were putting a, a drainage system. Uh, that field looks worse than it did before we started doing, uh, spending money on it, right? Now, one thing that I'll say, the, the lights, um, that were taken down, um, uh, you know, abruptly. And then, and later on, it said a lot of different things. But the one thing that I will say, the fences is, is, uh, high quality. But the bathroom, you know, I, I was quite offended the first time I went and I refused to use that bathroom because it reminded me of a visiting, um, bathroom. When you go to a prison, that's the bathroom that you see up there. So, for me, you know, um, you know, I, I feel strongly about that place up there because I grew up in that place. I played in that place and, and, and I would love to see that place continue on as a safe haven for people in that community that don't have a lot. So, you know, one of the things that if we are gonna have, uh, make an honest effort is that, um, when that thirty-two thousand dollars was put into that field and provided jobs for people in that community, they took care of it. You never heard of people breaking in. You never heard of people damaging anything over there. And, um, soon as the money and the funds got taken out and you have no, uh, responsibility for that. You inherited that. So, um, that's why sometimes when we talk to you and we tell you what we are used to, because at one time, we had, we had programs around here. We had a place, we had a place for our kids to go, we had places for the adults to go. And now that, that's all taken away. And, 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 um, they, and it's like a part of your self-esteem. You know, like I'd never, ever bring my college friends up here to Albany because we have nothing. Just, I'm embarrassed about our nightlife. I have nowhere to take them. And I'm talking about for thirty years. That's not just on your watch. So, you know, like when I speak, I don't speak to attack you, to attack your administration. What I speak to is people that are sick and tired of losing the little bit of things that bring us to it.
And, and, and I cannot agree more with the fact that the, the reason that we had to spend seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars to redo that field is because it was ignored. And we had multiple community meetings. People looked at the plans. We talked through what they would look like. So, we can talk to you about the environmental factors that you're, that you're referring to. Uh, this is the, this field, as I've said, is the only field and this is the only park and it should be. I'm not suggesting that it should not be. But the, this is the only recreational facility in the city that we have taken out of our normal, uh, uh, registration system of people being able to go in and register because we want to ensure that we're giving the community the first opportunity. So, there's more that we can do together. I suggested this to, um, Councilmember Robinson when he came to see me. Um, that we want the community to have input. We need to talk through what you're talking about with respect to the budgetary issues because as we look at it, we do think that we need a director just for this facility, particularly in the summertime. That's something that's become very clear to us.
Yeah, you say this, maybe Deki won't.
That's right. That's right.
I'm not talking about people. I'm talking about, I mean, that's a separate issue. But I'm talking about the programming and what happens at that facility. And so, that's a conversation that we can have. All that I was asking for from day one, and it wasn't me, was our recreation department. From February was the schedule. And so, I, I just want to be very clear. We can talk about all these other issues. My frustration, my frustration, my frustration.
I want to make sure.
Can I just say, my frustration was in...
Where's the commissioner?
So, we have a commissioner who is also the commissioner of Workforce Services who right now is working with twelve hundred young people across this city, ensuring that their summer and the experiences that they have are as high quality as they can be. The deputy commissioner is responsible for scheduling the fields and the recreational facilities. So, that is where, uh, this conversation started. That is who's responsible for ensuring that we're, uh, uh, scheduling our fields and that they're in the conditions that they're supposed to be in. So, we need to have more of a conversation. But I'm here because I am the one who has been attacked and who continues to hear throughout the community that I don't care and that I'm trying to take a field away. I'm not saying that we're perfect. And based on what, you know, what you and I have talked about, we can absolutely do better. I came here because I want this council to hear directly from me that there is nothing that I would not do to ensure that this facility is a facility that the community can be proud of and that the community utilizes and that the community points to as something that is lifting up their neighborhood and what it is that they want for themselves in their future. That is my commitment. All of the work that I have done, as imperfect as it may be, has been with that goal in mind.
Mr. Robinson, first.
Oh, yes. Thank you for meeting with your, uh, state mayor. And, uh, as I stated in our meeting earlier today, I think the deeper issue, um, here is the way that you approach the members.
That's right. That's right.
Putting on these programs. Um, the community felt that it was unresponsible and very disrespectful.
Hostile, yes.
And, uh, at the end of the day, we're all elected officials and we serve people. And we should not, uh, even though we get frustrated at times, you know, uh, we have differences, uh, with the members of the community sometimes, we should never make our community members feel less than. And that's what the community felt we did after the community went down to them.
Well, uh, and, you know, we can assign, uh, we can assign intent to, as you can see, I speak with my hands. Um, that conversation could have been a three-minute conversation. I went down and said, "We're gonna have a problem tomorrow because we've already leased this out to a league and we just saw on Facebook that you have a schedule to have a game tomorrow night. How can we work this out?"
You were hostile. You were hostile.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, that, that was exactly what I said. And if that is interpreted as hostile, then guilty as charged. I was frustrated that I had to find out from another player and from Facebook that we were gonna have on Thursday night, the next night, a potential clash with teams showing up to play from two different leagues. And that could have been a three-minute conversation with a, we'll, we'll give you our schedule. It was actually kind of what I expected to happen, but I wanted to have the benefit of face-to-face. Not have, have a face-to-face conversation because the, the phone conversations and the other conversations had led to a lot of miscommunication.
Then it's guilty, guilty as charged, not legally owed. Deki, and also playing apology.
That's right. That's right.
I believe that I owe an apology as well.
Well, Mayor, Mayor, um, Councilwoman?
Actually, that was, that's similar. The issues that I heard are, it sounds like a very frustrating situation. But, um, it sounded like, um, there was a lot of offense taken.
Well...
I'm sorry if you took offense to this here.
I would, I would, I would appreciate that in the spirit of the conversation that we tried to have and that I tried to have with you, that we could have had a far calmer conversation that would have been about how do we solve this together? I can't solve things all by myself. I was put in a situation where the city was in and still continue to be in a very difficult position. And you and I could have worked this out. And none of that conversation even happened.
I mean, I can't speak right now. I can't speak right now.
No, only public comment.
Only? Well, he can do it in public comment, yeah. Is any more questions by the council members?
I did say in that, in that apology, you put yourself in that situation by accepting the money and then mayor. I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult because I've kept my mouth quiet for a long time. But I'm just saying, when you put your foot out there and you come back... But I'm just saying, when you put your foot out there and you come back and you say, "I'm sorry because you were put in a situation that you put yourself in", because that, that field has been our field forever. And, you know, and, and, you know, I don't know how, just like, just like when they sold white ball, the Bay roof was allowed to play free at Lees. There's a bunch of situations that were operating in this city. And, and, and so now we're looking at it as thousands of cents. So I just want to let you know.
That's not how I'm looking at it. It is, it is, it is not, I don't, I don't care, I don't care if we ever make a penny at the Arbor Hill Field. I don't. That's not what this is about. This is about working to ensure that we have the facilities that the community wants and needs and not even being given the courtesy of a schedule. That's all that it was.
What you're saying is about money. You're saying interrupting...
We never, ever, ever...
Mr. Johnson, I don't, we're gonna interrupt you, but we, we have a public hearing now. We have to...